Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, February 24th, 2025 Fayetteville City Council Meeting. Welcome all of you who will join us in the audience, those who'll join us by way of online or the television. At this time, as with any meeting, we typically start with the invocation. We'll ask that Pastor Jeff Eisenhower, Aaron Lakes Baptist Church, if Pastor Jeff will come, ask that all will please stand for the prayer. Immediately following, if we could, repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, good to see you.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in this great country. Thank you for the privilege of living in this great city. And Father, as a minister of the gospel, I'm not the only one that's called to serve you. Every one of these city council members, according to your word, are called to serve you as well. And so, Father, it is a privilege to be called. It's a privilege, Father, to know that to whom much is given, much is required. And Father, I lift up Mayor Kovan and Lord the City Council and all of the decisions that had to be made in this room. Father, you tell us if we lack wisdom to ask of you, and you give it to us very liberally, and we thank you for that. Father, bless this meeting tonight, bless this city council, bless our city, Father, where you have put us. All world events affect us right here. And so, Father, we look to you and we trust you, and we thank you, Father, for watching over us. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Pastor, we know you well. You've worked a long time in these vineyards here, but tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry.
Yeah, I was the pastor of Aaron Lake Baptist Church for thirty-five and a half years, and I just stepped down in January. I retired. Highly recommend it. And so, I retired. But my successor, who was on my staff, Andrew Clark, he's with us, I turned the baton over to him. He is now the new pastor. I wish every church could experience that kind of succession, transferring older leadership into new leadership, and the church has really just taken off and grown stronger under his leadership. So, I'm thankful for that opportunity to have done that, to have finished well at Aaron Lake. Aaron Lake is a multicultural, multi-generational, multi-racial church, and God has been good to us to make a difference in our city. Several years ago, Andrew and myself got together, and we asked ourselves, if our church burnt down, if we weren't meeting anymore, would this city even know? Would they even care? And that kept us up at night. So, we decided to do something about that, to get involved in the city, to get involved in the school system, to provide meals for our children in the school system, and also to provide a very strong recovery, a live recovery ministry in town. So, it's a great church. It's been my privilege to serve there, and I look forward to just seeing good things, to keep good things going on in the city and on that side of town, on the west side at Aaron Lake Baptist.
Well, we appreciate that. Let's give Pastor a round of applause.
Thank you, Ray.
And Pastor, Pastor Eisenhower, one more thing. How many years did you say?
Thirty-five and a half.
So, so, we have a-
Before you were born.
Well, I wish, but thank you. Yes, sir. I need to give you something just for that.
Yeah, yeah.
But, well, listen, we've got a token of our appreciation, so I'm gonna come down with you if you don't mind.
Okay, alright.
Don't go nowhere. So Pastor, for thirty-five years, you have ministered to the people in our community. You've been a great community advocate. You've been a friend, and you have been a pillar in this community. And we would like to present you the key to the city and the highest award that we can give from the Fayetteville City Council and myself. And the reasons follows. It says, "On behalf of the City of Fayetteville, the mayor and council, our city key and corn are proudly presented to Pastor Jeff Eisenhower in grateful recognition of his devoted interest and unwavering commitment to this community, February 10th, 2025." Sir, thank you.
What an honor. What an honor. That is a great honor. Do I get in all the golf courses?
Didn't say how many doors it opens. But thank you for your work, Pastor. Again, thank you. Thank you so much to Pastor and to the successor. Got big shoes to fill, but we look forward to working with you in light manners. So, thank you for that and your contribution to our community. Counsel, with that, we'll move to 4.0 is the announcements. Don't see any announcements. I'll defer to council if there are none. We'll move to 5.0, the city manager's report, and we have Assistant City Manager, Adam Lindsay.
Yes, I do not have any reports tonight, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you. Counsel, moving to 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. Council Member Banks, well, Council Member Thompson. There's a motion to approve and seconded by Banks-McGoughlin. Is there any discussion on the motion? Alright, counsel, look to you for your votes. Who are we missing, Jim? Huh? Oh, I'm sorry. Miss Paula. Succession. Councilmember, councilmember in here. Alright. Alright, motion carries unanimously. Agenda's approved. Counsel, moving to consent, 7.0A section. Entertaining emotional questions, Councilmember Thompson, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Alright, seconded by you, Councilmember here. Alright, any discussion on the motion to approve consent? Alright, seeing none, counsel, I'll look to you for action on that. Who are we missing? Miss Paula? Okay, alright. Alright, motion carries. Those, motion carries eight to one, those voting opposition, Councilmember Benevente. Alright, moving to 8.0, reports, the Public Arts Commission Annual Report. Hey, sir. How you doing?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'll just keep this one brief. Public Arts Commission is a group that some members, six members appointed by the Arts Council, three by Arts Council, three by City Council. They generally meet once a year. The most recent that they did last year was the Public Arts, fifteen art pieces for ArtScape Eight exhibit. You do have probably that copy of that in your packet, but those are temporary-permanent installations. They lease artwork for one year, purchase pieces for longer. So, probably in the next month or two, they're gonna meet again and presumably kind of change out some of that art in the downtown for ArtScape, hopefully Exhibit Nine for sculptures in downtown and surrounding areas.
That's it?
That's it.
Alright. Alright, council, any question? I see Councilmember here. Is that a question?
No, sir. That's old. We need to carry you.
Oh, okay. Alright. Alright, seeing none. Any action needed on that? It was just informational purpose, so we need to receive the report. Alright, so council, I entertain a motion. Councilmember Thompson, is the motion to accept, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Discussion on that? Alright, counsel, look to you for your votes. Alright, motion carries unanimously. Alright, council, moving to the next staff report, 9.01, Second Quarter Strategic Performance Report. Good evening, sir, gentlemen. Tag team.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council Members. I'm Chris Lowry, the Strategic and Performance Analytics Manager. Presenting with me tonight is Mr. Andrew Brayboy. He's a Senior Corporate Performance Analyst for the city, and we thank you for the opportunity to present the second quarter update for the strategic plan for FY25. Our FY25 journey continues to gain momentum. In quarter two, we're building on the solid foundation that we had started with in quarter one with our five key strategic priorities driving tangible positive change across all of Fayetteville. This progress goes beyond just the numbers, though. It reflects the meaningful impact of our initiatives that align directly with city council's vision to improve the quality of life for all of our residents. While looking through some of the data, you'll notice that some of them show TBD. Those have still actively been developed, programs, different initiatives to accomplish the priorities that we had set forth. Some of those will roll out in the coming weeks, days, months. During this presentation, we're gonna keep it brief. We did have a highlight overview during the strategic retreat around two weeks ago, so we won't dive deep into it since we've already had a brief overview of it. Just a few weeks ago, we'll make this more for informational piece for our residents to be able to get information and updates on it. Our FY25 roadmap focuses on the five key priorities: violence reduction in mental health, affordable housing and revitalization, youth engagement, economic growth through city-owned properties, and city branding and communication.
So, to begin, for priority one, this is our violence reduction and mental health response priority. And just to recap, some of our approved actions for this priority included identifying service gaps and overlapping community services, strengthening community partnerships and collaboration initiatives, and also developing the staffing or OCS based on industry best practices. As you can see, in quarter two, we've completed fifteen collaborative initiatives with various community partners. We've had forty-seven individuals who have utilized our mental health services through our mental health liaison. In the mental health pillar for OCS, we're also working with the Community Paramedic Program to focus on the mental health co-response model and using their established program to try to provide for the city's dedicated units. We're also working with a Durham Heart Program to potentially contract for a unit for our own community paramedic program. Staff is also working on the cost of gun violence and violence interrupters to give us better guidance and to help shape policy moving forward. And as far as for our OCS staffing, we've hired two employees in the OCS office, and the OCS Director of Precision is currently accepting applications.
Moving on to priority two, is focused on affordable housing and revitalization. To strengthen our revitalization efforts, the city adopted the Section 108 lending policy, providing additional financial tools to support economic development projects. We've successfully closed on three affordable housing projects leveraging around $3.6 million in city investment to expand housing opportunities. To further increase homeownership, we launched the Single Family Housing Development Program, making forty-seven lots available for affordable housing in existing neighborhoods. Revitalizing communities remains a top priority. We've issued an RFQ for historic preservation grant in the Broaddale Community, ensuring continued investment in key areas. A significant achievement this quarter is the development of the Youth Engagement Center on Murchison Road, offering critical resources to our young residents. In quarter two, we secured funding to develop twenty-six new multifamily affordable housing units, increasing access to quality housing while preserving thirty-seven jobs through ECD grants and loans. Development Services and Economic and Community Development are working together to help property owners access repair funding before demolition is considered, prioritizing rehabilitation when possible. To support revitalization efforts, we've used ARPA funds to remove blighted properties without impacting the general fund, enhancing the city's appearance. These efforts demonstrate our commitment to neighborhood revitalization and affordable housing.
For priority three, this is our youth engagement through Parks and Recreation priority. And to review some of our approved actions included sustaining and strengthening our partnership on the Orange Street School Project, and also promoting diverse youth engagement and interactive programming. And of course, we always want to continue our pursuit of STEM opportunities for our youth. Our priority is to increase youth engagement opportunities. And in this way, we're measuring our success by increasing access to our opportunities and also by increasing available programming hours for our youth. In this regard, the ongoing restoration of Orange Street School has continued into the second quarter with the completion of the second floor. This is gonna be the primary location for our STEM programming. The second floor includes technology and an art studio, a science lab, and also a recording studio. And the Rubik Cutting is set for Thursday, February 27th at 4:00 PM. The Junior Officials Training Program is on track to meet our FY25 target of thirty participants. And just to recall, this program focuses on life skills training, athletic officiating, and field and court practicum exercises. And then, for opportunities, which we're always looking for for our youth, the Parks and Rec has received Fayetteville a $20,000 grant from the Fayetteville Common Parks and Recreation from the North Carolina Amateur Sports for youth football safety equipment. And they're gonna use this to actually purchase brand-new tackle football helmets for our youth. In addition to this, FCPR has also applied for a $15,000 program support grant from the Fayetteville Common Arts Council for the Independence Concert and Fireworks Event held at Festival Park. And this funding is gonna be used to secure the services of the Fayetteville Symphony, and notification for that grant's gonna come later on in the, in the spring.
In reviewing priority four, around city-owned properties for economic growth, one key initiative that we've completed was that we've issued a RFP for private developers to explore opportunities for developing affordable housing on city-owned properties. This directly addresses our housing needs and fosters economic growth. Additionally, an RFP was issued for real estate development on properties located at Blount Street and Gillespie Street, focusing on revitalizing key areas of the city. We've launched a real-time listing of available city properties on the city's website, making it easier for potential bidders to access information. An interactive GIS map is also available to help users view and evaluate properties more effectively. City properties are now categorized into two different groups: single lots managed by the City Attorney's Office and larger development lots managed by ECD. ECD is also collaborating with legal and the City Attorney's Office to review bids and recommend awards. This streamlined process will continue to facilitate the sale of city-owned properties and drive economic development. This approach not only potentially drives new revenue by returning our city assets to the tax rolls, but also supports sustainable development and maximizes the potential value for our properties.
And so then, council's last priority is priority five, which is our city branding and communication priority. And just to recap, some of our approved actions included neighborhood engagement strategies, making Fayetteville's brand distinct, and sharing the city's signature stories and more. Strategic partnerships allow us to tell our story through branding efforts that resonate both with residents and beyond. By increasing our media presence and driving engagement across social platforms, we're striving to attract both residents and businesses to explore the opportunities that Fayetteville has to offer. Through collaboration with IT Department, Markham has launched a newly redesigned city website with a resident-focused layout, better event visibility, and also enhanced search functionality. Since the redesigned website has launched in February, February the 11th, our stats showed that thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five visits or people have landed on the page, and then a hundred thousand seven hundred and eighty-two page views have occurred since that February 11th launch date. And also, this initiative was 100% funded by ARPA funds. And then also, staff has also rebranded the city's e-newsletter, which is City Happenings, for better engagement, which has increased its open rate to thirty-seven point six five percent, which is over the industry standard of thirty-seven percent. We're also continuing our rollout of America's Can Do City branding across all signage, vehicle graphics, and promotional materials. Markham has updated, updated a hundred and thirteen city limit signs, rebranded key city signage like Police HQ, Festival Park, and more, to ensure all branding is consistent across all digital platforms. And then lastly, Markham has also conducted strategic community engagement initiatives to differentiate city of Fayetteville's identity from other North Carolina cities. Based on the resident survey and council's guidance, Markham has increased its presence through social media outlets to be able to reach our residents and businesses even more effectively. And then lastly, for our recognition and performance, Markham has earned first place in the North Carolina City and County Communicators 2024 Excellence in Communications Awards. This is for the city's promotional video category, which was a City of Fayetteville Solid Waste Christmas Story. We're in first place in that.
Well, I didn't know that.
In addition to this, Markham has also been nominated, or was nominated, for the Greater Fayetteville Chambers Excellence in Communication Award.
So, as we move forward, we will continue to analyze data, refine our strategies, and engage stakeholders to ensure we're aligned with community needs and expectations. We'll also maintain and strengthen our partnerships with local organizations, focusing on key areas such as mental health, affordable housing, and youth engagement, ensuring a holistic approach to community support. We will complete the third and fourth quarters of this FY25 plan with the quarter three updates presented to council around May 2025. Additionally, staff will develop work plans for the priorities set at your recent retreat and present them to you for your approval with the start of implementation in July 2025. As always, we encourage feedback and suggestions to help shape our future initiatives and identify areas of further focus. Thank you for your time and consideration. We stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, gentlemen. I do have a question. I'll go to Councilman Davidson. I have a question for you.
Yes, thank you all for this report. I just don't necessarily have a question, just maybe like a suggestion. Just a thought that I had while we were sitting here. You know, when we get, we send out surveys for the city. I don't know if you guys can maybe send out a survey of our strategic plans that we have, and like for each strategic plan, maybe get a survey and put like, what is one thing that you would like to see council do with this strategic goal? And that way, we can have a report on what the community is saying, because we can hear it, but we're not able to reach everyone. I will bring to the city manager and to staff what the community is saying, but just so that we can make sure that we're still trying to reach as many people as possible. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and a great, great point by my colleague. I want to just follow up on one thing before I ask my question. So, the website that you went to, let's see which slide that was, said it generated like a million, or you anticipate a million views? Yeah, visits to city website.
Yep, so over the full year.
So, you average about a quarter million a quarter?
Right.
Alright. So, to that point, is there a portion on the website with that kind of traffic for people to ask or give suggestions? Because really, you've got an audience that's driving almost fifty thousand clicks a week or more, over fifty. So, is there any, any way to capture feedback from that? Because you've already, you've already put the brand out there to drive the traffic up. So-
With the new changes, I'll have him speak on that. I don't, I have-
Oh, that's a Lawrence question. I got you.
Website that we've developed out, so we'll let him speak on that for us.
Can you say your question one more time, Mayor?
Yeah, basically just saying that you anticipating a million visits to the website.
Yes, sir.
Is a lot. Are we able to allow for, instead of us having a separate process to ask for input or a separate process for suggestions, is there a way to integrate that into the website that's getting that kind of traffic anyway?
Just to have a standing, submit your comment here.
Yeah, as, as we're doing that, you know, is there, you know, we're about to do our strategic plans. Can you give us the top three things that are important to you? Or, you know, how is your experience interacting with the city? Or some of these things that we've been asking for feedback. You've already got a million people going to the site already.
Yes, sir. We can. We can build that into the top line where we have the managers, sign up for the manager's newsletter, report an issue, contact us into that line there. We can easily do that. And then work with IT to build a form out so that it's a fillable form that gets pushed to staff somewhere.
Okay. And the last thing is, I want to go to the Pursuing a Safer, Healthier Community, where it talked about integration of partnerships, yes, in the OCS, which was one of our strategic goals. I don't see, and maybe, you know, these eyes, not what they used to be, but I don't see the county on here. I see county departments or functions, but where is Cumberland County in this partnership or potential partnership circle? I see FTCC, I see Containment Care, see Cumberland County Community Development, I see Health Net, but where, where's Cumberland County? Because they handle a lot of these functions and-
Yes, sir. So, working with the, with Cape Fear EMS, they are, they are a, they are an extension of the county's EMS program. So, at this point, that's where we are working with them, and they get partly the, part of their funding from the county providing EMS throughout the county and in the city. So, that's our touch point. As we move along and as we have the Hartz model, I'm sure we'll engage the Health Department as well as the Social Services folks, but we're in the infancy of that process at this point.
Well, I'm not looking for the source of funds necessarily, because Cape Fear is its own institution, even though that's what you're saying. But my, my point- But my, my point is, is that if we're not considering them a partner or a potential partner, you know, then they don't consider themselves a partner or potential partner. So is there a way to integrate that? Because as this thing comes online, we're going to need the county's participation, because so many of the things that we will encounter with this response, and I'm sure I hear my council member down there breathing a little bit, but I'm just thinking for next steps, that we want to, to show the spirit of partnership. So is it possible that that can be included in our advertisement?
Absolutely. I think as we move forward, we can absolutely include that and, and make it a point to work closer with the county on that exercise.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mayor Pro Tim, and then I have Councilmember here. Is Davis that again? Or is that, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I was going to say is, looking at this circle here, and we all have little circles in here, we just need you to put the county to have a circle. That's basically to let them know that we are ready to have partnership in them with us. So that's all I need is, we just need to add a circle.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. Guys, thank you for what you do, man. I, I really do appreciate your, your diligently working as strong as you have been in getting our reports out and getting our word out. Positive feedback is coming back, because I've already heard from some of my residents not thinking, not that it slipped, but not thinking about our new website, for example. And when I heard residents talking about, oh, it's a lot easier. Now you can click on this and go there and go there. So a great thumbs up, as we stated earlier at our strategic meeting. I was trying to go back to the slide, and I thought it was in the first, well, I won't waste time looking for it, but it was, we had a tab on there of "Tell Our Story," right? And that is something that councils have been about for a long time. And I know it's always continuing to evolve, telling our story. What can we do to continue to get our story out? I do want to give you a thumbs up. As I stated at our strategic meeting, I like social media a lot, and I like a lot of the social media platforms that the city of Fayetteville now does have. And I, I continue to get positive feedback, even when I'm not expecting it, from residents saying, oh, yeah, I saw this, I learned that. Or something very easy there for a representative, for someone like myself, a council member, or someone in the city to click on it, save it, and share it. So a thumbs up. Thank you, guys, for what you're doing, and we'll continue to move forward. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. And before I go to Councilman Davis for the second time, ACM Jody Phelps, good job with Markham. I mean, that was something that we, you know, for the listening audience, I may not know the background, but we have always felt that we have not communicated our story well. We let, we let other news outlets and other people define who we are. And we made that a priority, and I see that you've really done that to drive a million people online. Our social media is, is moving to actually be recognized statewide. Those awards that you were saying to, so it's commendable. I see the output of it. I see the All-American signage. I mean, we've got a lot to talk about and brag on, so I appreciate it. So keep up, keep up the good work. Yeah, and thank you. Thank you all, guys, too.
I was actually going to mention, sir, can I mention one, one thing?
Yes, sir.
Like with the strategic planning retreat that we just recently have, on this slide here, you see there's, there's measures of success. That's one reason we kept trying to reiterate from council, what did you see success looking like?
Yeah.
And because of this, we were able to create those action plans with staff to bring that back to council, to drive that forward. So that was the importance of that. That's the same thing we're going to do with this new FY26 plan. We'll take those successes and create those action plans to bring back to council.
Got you. Thank you for that. All right, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted, I think on the slide you had a youth opportunities on there. I just wanted to, I think you guys mentioned about the ribbon cutting for the Orange Street School. Just wanted to reiterate that and invite the community out to come out. I forgot the time. What's the time again? 4 o'clock?
4 o'clock.
That's going to be Thursday, February 27th at 4:00 p.m.
Yes, thank you.
And a slow point. Now, we're going to receive this report and move on. We've got a couple more. But just for that, you know, hats off to, to the staff and to the council and previous councils and to the state for making that investment into restoring the Orange Street School. Grant Bennett and his team, those young folks from the 2-26 project, with bringing innovation and Google and Microsoft actually invested in, you know, up to almost $100,000 to make that into a STEM-related tech. And that's right here in our community. So thank you for that. And wanted to make sure that people understood the impacts of what's going. So thank you. Thank you for that. All right, Council, entertain a motion to receive this. Councilmember McNair, you had a question?
No.
You making a motion? All right. So a motion by Councilmember McNair, seconded by Councilmember, oh, that's our Banks McLaughlin. Okay. Davis. All right. You pulled it back on me. All right. So any discussion on the motion? All right, council, look to you for votes on that. Who are we missing, Ms. Paula? You made the motion.
I think it needs some oil on it.
Oh, it needs, okay. Yeah. All right. All right. Well, yeah. All right. Well, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, staff members. All right, council, moving to 9.02, the second quarter financial report. Time to talk about the money. Mr. Yates, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Somebody mentioned earlier that North Carolina was playing tonight, so I'll, so I'll be quick.
Okay. All right now. I knew you had the wrong color blue on anyway.
So tonight for you, we just have our updated second quarter financial information. Keep in mind, the second quarter ended on December 30th, I'm 31st. So this is going to be through the first six months of the year. It's really our first full quarter of good financial data. The way the financial year works for us is that in July, August, and September, we're still working off the prior year, trying to handle the crossover information. So there's a lot of moving back and forth between the fiscal years to get, to get alignment. So this is your first three months of really good data. So what we have, and you know, I like to be bottom line upfront with you, there are three kinds of things we want to look at. Remember, we talked about it at our retreat, about the stressors that we have in our organization, in our community. So I just want to continue that line of thinking. These are three areas that I just want to look at and talk a little bit about as we go through, but something I wanted to put in your mind. The first is that the city's financial strength is strong. The general fund is performing as it has historically. So we're not seeing any major ups or downs. It's just very consistent, which is kind of true and standard for the city. We don't normally see violent swings or significant swings within the year. Vacancies are typically a good thing. I think at the dinner meeting, we talked a little bit about it. The city relies on those vacancies to help balance the budget, take advantage of that lab salary. But it's also a risk, and a risk from a couple of different perspectives. First off, is that the primary or the biggest chunk of our vacancies are in our police department. So for every position that police doesn't have, that services that are either being filled through overtime or stressing that system to be able to provide that service. Same thing with fire department. So what we're seeing is, even though we're saving salary money, every hour of service that we use in overtime costs about one and a half times what it normally would cost. So we're having to pay time and a half for that overtime. Then in addition to that, as we see the federal government making adjustments, we've all been reading about DOGE and all the different work that they're doing at the federal level. If there are a large number of federal employees that hit the job market, it's possible that a significant number of those are going to look toward us for, for employment. There are a lot of those jobs that would be similar or transferable skill sets to the jobs we have. If that happens, and we start to see that vacancy number creep down during the year, then we're going to have to look at the budgetary impact. Probably not so much this year, but if we start to see that, that number come down in next year, we'll have to discuss that, because we've relied on that average of about 10% vacancy every year. And if that drops to 5%, that's, that's a pretty good amount of money that we're, we're going to have to look to try to either reduce out of budget or figure out how to fund. And then finally, the geopolitical and economic pressures. So how, how are discussions like tariffs impacting us? Well, we know that the cost of steel is going to go up. The price of goods is going to go up in some cases. We've already, some of our suppliers have already told us, be prepared. If tariffs go up, your price for parts, your price for construction, all these things are going to go up. And that's above the normal inflation. So normally, if we're looking at a project, three years from now, we all know that time of value of money, right? As you move out from the date of construction, that project could grow 5% a year just under normal inflationary times. But when you start adding tariffs and those other economic pressures, then that makes that cost go way up. And then we also know that some of our federal funding could be at risk. Things we planned on doing are, could be at risk that we haven't drawn down on. But what I will tell you is, the team is working diligently to draw every penny we can get before anything else comes down from the federal government. So we are making a specific effort to try to ensure that that doesn't happen. But we just have to kind of keep our eye on that. It's, it's hard to forecast, and it changes constantly. But I wanted to put those three factors or those three things in your mind, because that's the general gist that we're seeing in the trends. General fund cash flow, the city operates at a deficit most of the year. We'll see this number creep up and probably flip in, for our next quarter, because by January, when we get all the tax revenue in from the county and we start to see all that, we'll see our total revenues creep up. But this is fairly standard. You can see in prior years, we were a little bit ahead even on the uses side or the expenditure side in the prior year. Our general fund revenue, we're at about 42% of budget at this point. Last year at this time, we were about 46% of what we'd end up getting. So that's right on target. The biggest difference is in the unrestricted intergovernmental revenues. And that's because there's some lag on the sales tax payments right now. And that comes, that comes through the state to us, but also information from the county. So that should even itself out over the next couple of months. And then you can see there's little bits and pieces. So when I say we're performing as expected, we're right on top of where we were in the prior year. Salaries and benefits and expenditures, you can see where we're tracking. And let me clarify, on this table, green means you're doing better than you did last year. Red means you're doing a little bit, I won't say worse, but you're trailing last year. In this case, we can see in the other charges, that's, and you'll see it again on the next slide, that was our payment to the county for sales tax overage. If you remember back, we have a deal with the county that says you have to give them. So we are still having some conversations with them about that, what that looks like. But we paid them an initial payment of about 3.2 million. That is what we believe is what we owe them. So that, we went ahead and took care, and we paid that, but it's showing up now in our expenditures and making us ahead of last year, because up to this point in last year, we hadn't made any of those annexation payments. Okay? This is kind of where we're performing on a departmental basis. I can tell you in budget evaluation, that's largely our transparency module cost, the Open Gov cost. We talked about in other appropriations, that really is around transfers and our annexation payments. The city attorney's office is tracking ahead or behind where they were last year, are more expenditures than last year. That's due to use of outside counsel. When we're looking at IT, that's due to increased cost of licensing as well as timing of those licenses. So some of these are just timing differences that'll work themselves out as we go through the year. And then public services is the same thing. It's just kind of a timing difference. So with that, kind of what's going on otherwise, we have our detailed reports attached to your item in Granicus. If you want to go through it, there's line items for every department and the general fund, and then line items for every fund, operating fund. Our next financial report will be with the close of the third quarter. So we expect to bring that back to you in April. And that'll be a really good snapshot, because then you'll be, you'll have six months of good data, 12 months, or nine months of the actual year-end data or year data. So we'll be talking about that. We're in the process of working through the capital budget now. We anticipate bringing that to you around the 1st of April. The operating budget process is well underway. In fact, departments submitted their budgets, so they're under review right now. We're working through what that looks like. Our transparency portal is under development and should be out in the next few months. When I say a transparency portal, what I'm talking about is ability for residents and US council and anybody that wants to see it, to be able to go to the website, see real-time data on city's expenditures, revenues, our payments. So you'll be able to see checks, essentially our check registry, and see actively on a self-guided drill-down detail around the city's, around the city's financial activity. In addition, when we put out our budget book, we'll also have an online version this year, which will allow you to drill down on a self-guided, what I would refer to as a self-guided research. And so if you have something particularly you're interested in and you want to delve down into the budget a little bit more on the financial side, you'll be able to see more detail. So that transparency module really opens the books to the public so they can see everything that we see on a daily basis, and it's in real time. So it'll update probably every night. So that's always, it's, it's a good project. We put our check registry out there now, but it's a little bit, it's about every quarter or every six months. So the data's a little stale, but this will be in real time. The other thing that's important is we'll have a possible bond issuance at some point in this year. Trying to wait to see what the market volatility, volatility does. We're watching bond prices go up and down. So, but we will need to go to the market and borrow money on our 2022 GO bonds as well as probably the MacArthur Park money and so forth. So we'll have that bond issuance coming up. I'll give you more information on that as we get closer. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, Jeff.
So Jeff, I did have a couple of questions, and I have one. I'll go in after Councilmember Davis. Councilmember here, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Yates, for your report. Just like everyone else, I'm, I'm looking at what's taking place within our federal government. And I'm not a happy camper at all, me personally. As I look at these proposed cuts and things along that line, I not only think about me personally and, and as a private business owner personally, but of course, also my city that I help represent with my colleagues. And my question is, do we see any possible hurts? If this is the time, if this is what I can speak on with our, our title here, with our report here, our second quarter financial report here, is where, where do we see our path going with what we're hearing about? And you guys are probably hearing about it more than we are, and what's coming down the path? Because what you just stated in your very beginning, I thought you stated that the city of Fayetteville is, is, is strong and sound. So as we continue to want to be strong and sound as municipalities across the, you know, not just the state but everywhere, when we hear about these possible cutbacks and, you know, we deal with grants and we deal with, just, you know what I mean? Better, you can articulate it better than I can. Where do we stand and what do we foresee happening for the city of Fayetteville?
Yes, sir. Councilmember here, I wish I had a crystal ball and I could give you an exact answer to that, but I do not. What, what I can share with you that staff is doing along with our federal consultants, we have gone out and sat with and talked to all of the department directors, and we've created a lengthy and comprehensive list of all of the federally funded programs we have across the city, whether it's grants, discretionary allocations, block grants, competitive funding, and also the funds that we were actively pursuing or looking at. So we can understand and have a very clear picture of what an impact is to us, but more importantly, what the return on that investment is for the city and the city's residents and for the council. So when we go and talk to our congressional offices, our agencies, we have a very clear understanding of what those investments and those dollars do for the city and that they are a good investment for us. Our case would be preservation of that funding and those funding streams, right? I don't know what the federal government's going to do, but we've created that matrix. The other thing we're looking at in the finance team is helping us get that number. And we're working with our federal consultants to create a, effectively a spreadsheet that has a risk assessment level for each one of those federal funds based on the best information that we have and what we're hearing, whether it's high, medium, or low. And then what are the things that we need to do to prepare for that? If it's a high risk, at a high risk of, of being cut or unfunded or not continuing, then what are the, the shifts that we need to do internally for the city so we can either sustain the program or change the program? So we can either sustain the program or change the program or fund it a different way or do whatever based on the impact it has. Or what are the talking points that we need to be talking about in our community and at the federal level and at the state level to either preserve or maintain that funding? I hope that helps answer your question.
Yes, ma'am, and I, 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 yes, yes. And I basically was also asking not so much for us here tonight, but I was asking for us, but of course for those of our citizens that we represent. Whenever we get ready to move forward and go, for example, the Congress of Cities is in March and, and, and other areas where we, we go out and talk to our state and federal folk, are we also looking to huddle together with local municipalities across the area, across the region? So that when we do go, we go in a bigger voice than just Fayetteville, North Carolina?
And you know how I feel about that. I think there's power in the collective voice. And yes, sir, absolutely. I think now is the time for us to come together as a community and as a region and bring all of those voices together to the table. We are the largest neighbor to the largest military installation in the world. And we serve a distinct and unique population. And they deserve us to support them along with all of the residents of Fayetteville and Cumberland County and the entire southeastern region of the, of our state. And so we want to bring everybody to the table. And every one of those municipalities and counties in the region is looking at the same thing and the same programs. And I think if we come together, we can talk about the benefit and the value of those.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Councilmember Davis.
Mr. Mayor, if I could as well, um, I was trying to pull it up and I'll share it with the council later on tonight. Councilmember here, your question is very, very timely and very insightful as well and not to move off of Jeff's presentation. But we have a slide that shows that in our area, I think it was 66,000 jobs and the mayor, shaking his head, he saw the same one, that are federal employees. Those are your neighbors, your constituents, friends and family. And we all want what's best for the country. But the idea that half of that number or 10% of that number potentially are, have job uncertainty, that is something that is of concern. And as Assistant City Manager Phelps mentioned, we are going to work very hard to make sure the council is armed with that information. Community impacts, organizational impacts when we go to DC. Is it March 10th? Yeah, yeah. A very good question, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, you mentioned that the community could go and look at some budget information. On that, on that page, is there a way that they can? Because some of this stuff is going to look foreign to some of the residents. Is there a way that they can see what some of this stuff means and see what's inside of it? Like you have some unrestricted intergovernmental revenues. Like they may not know exactly what's in that. Is there a way that they can go and find that out? Or did they just call the city office or call?
There's a couple of things that we do to try to help with that. There's extensive how to read the document and how to process information from that. So glossaries, answer, frequently asked questions, that kind of thing. We also have a way they can send questions to us. We take all the council questions and any questions we get, publish those. I believe we call them the Budget Chronicles. But we put all that information out there. But certainly if someone ever has a question about the budget, they can call our offices. They can reach out to the budget office, the number's on the website. And they can ask that question. There's also an email that they can send in and ask a question. So we, we try to be responsive to those questions and help explain it. Because you're right, governmental finance is a little foreign to a lot of folks because it's not standard accounting. It's modified accrual base, so it's cash some of the year. It's accrual base like you would in a private business, other parts of the year. So there's a lot, a lot to unpack there. But we try to put as much information out there as we can with explanation.
Right, thank you, sir.
All right, before I go to Councilmember Thompson, so my question is, you had mentioned earlier that you may be bringing a bond issuance request to us. If we don't have projects ready to go, with interest rates being where they are, maybe a cut later on, second, third, fourth quarter of the year, why, why are we issuing debt now before we are ready to go? Because we'll start paying on that money, right?
It's going to be, the plan would probably be later in the year. Not, obviously not in the next, not in the first quarter of 2025 because we're almost done with that. It really depends on our cash flow. So if we have projects, for instance, public services is spending pretty quickly to do road projects and that kind of thing. And we're using our cash balances to do that, to reimburse ourselves. So at some point, there'll be this equilibrium where one, we, it'll be beneficial to us to get that cash and hold it versus using the existing cash and foregoing interest earnings. So we're continually monitoring our cash position as a city. We're continuing looking at what our expenditures are going to be and forecasting out. So a lot of that depends on project expenditure, what the market looks like, what the LGC calendar looks like as far as.
What the rates are.
Where the, where the rates are, all those different things. So we work with our, in tandem with our financial advisor, who is constantly in the markets and our, and look at those, and then also the LGC to kind of have that conversation. So I don't have a definitive timeframe, that's why I kind of said later in the year, because we're just kind of watching it and seeing what unfolds.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking particularly for some of these large capital projects, you've got to have it designed, you've got to have it bid out, you know what I mean? It's not ready to go, so I don't see issuing the debt, paying the interest until just to sit it in the bank and lose money. So that was the point on that, so.
Well, and, and that becomes the kind of equilibrium between investments and kind of, if you're, if you're using your cash and you're missing out on 5%, and we could be paying 4%. So there just gets to be that cash flow equilibrium point that we, that we are constant evaluation and when our revenues are coming in and so forth. We just don't want to leave ourselves cash strapped when we try to do contracts.
All right, all right, Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Yates, for that presentation. I want to ask you a question again that I asked you earlier today when I called you. And that was about our vacancy rate. I don't think a lot of people in the city realize how much our staff do with less because they don't see it. Whether it's staff, whether it's fire department, whether it's police department. Upstairs, we talked about how it's going to be an increase in vacancies in the federal. So hopefully we can decrease our vacancies here locally. I don't know if this is for you or Mr. Clip or Ms. Jody or the city manager, but what can we do to attract those individuals in those different areas?
One of the things I think that we do is, um, when you hear this from both the fire and police chief in just a moment as well, is to continue to support, positive support from the council, whether it be through equipment, whether it not be through training or through pay or recognitions. It means a lot to be an employer of choice. That's something we don't talk about very often. But it's slow and steady also to winst the race on this. And as part of our budget package for the upcoming year, we're trusting that council will continue to do as you've done every year, which is to make sure that employees who are our number one resource are taken care of. But just asking a question means a lot to employees. And, but definitely your presence and counsel, your support as part of the budget process means a lot to employees. And it helps us with our recruitment efforts as well.
Thank you, sir. But one follow-up, Jeff, you said we're at 10.8. What should be our average again?
It's not, um, somewhere around eight to 10 because you have normal turnover and attrition through retirements, people moving on to other jobs, moving up and so forth. So it's not unheard of to be right around that eight to 10% number for a local government. I would say anything south of 8% is you're kind of straining. You're kind of at full, you know, full, about around 4%, you're certainly, that's a full house. So I think as we go through the budget cycle, as the manager mentioned, looking at the pillars and employer of choice, because it's not just about salary, it's about all those other things, that those, that's how we attract that workforce and the best qualified employees to be that employer of choice, so people want to come here. Not just because they don't have another option, but because that's where they want to be.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McNair?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Jeff. Thank you, you make your job look so easy. But however, I get butterflies every time we have these types of reports because I receive a lot of questions after these reports. I just have one question, I think the mayor kind of hit on it a little bit. He was messing in my question over here. What measures are in place to ensure accountability and transparency in how the general funds expenditures are measured, are managed across the different departments?
Absolutely. So you have your budgetary controls. So you as a council have adopted a budgetary control, which is essentially the limit on what departments can spend, that we have transfer authorities in place and those internal controls. Those budgetary controls then include this, like this reporting to you. We put our financial information out. This, this report's available on our website along with our ACFIR and our budget. So residents can go and see from the public's perspective how we started the year, how the year is going, then how the year ended. So when you kind of book in all of those. Internally, departments are always working with the same financial data. We review it on a monthly basis, bi-weekly basis, particularly when payrolls come out and that kind of thing to take a look at it. So there's a lot of internal to the organization, internal control, but also transparency to the public. And when we get our transparency portal open, that'll just heighten that level that residents can see that information even in a real-time basis.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, so Councilmember Davis, second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to mention something that I mentioned in our strategic planning in reference to the vacancies. And I think Mr. Manager hit on it a little bit. So we all know that times are changing and that we're evolving. And so technology is a big thing. So as we're looking to fill vacancies and fill up slots that are empty, make sure that we're looking in ways to find equipment or technology that helps fill those slots that maybe not, can be, will have to be filled by an actual human being. And so just like this court system, they switched over to a system called Odyssey. So maybe look into positions that don't necessarily require, um, require bodies being at the computer or I think maybe working from home is going away a little bit. But however, maybe finding ways that the, this generation, my generation and generations behind me, who necessarily are not going to be, you know, going to a nine to five every day, but don't mind working from home or, or working the technology that it takes to run these equipments. So as we're looking to fill our vacancies, making sure that we're not just looking to fill bodies and seats, but actually looking for the technology to help us as well.
Absolutely.
All right, Councilmember Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we receive the report.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Oh, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, you had a question or is that a second? All right, so motion by Councilmember Thompson to receive the report, second by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Any discussion? The council look to you for your votes on this item. All right, motion carries, thank you. All right, council moving to 9.03, Fire Department, 2024 Fourth Quarter Report. Chief Dove, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council.
Good evening.
I want to take a quick minute. Chief Alvarez is with us tonight. He was supposed to be at the county chiefs meeting tonight getting an award, but that changed, so he snuck in on me. But Friday, he's retiring with over 30 years of service.
Oh, wow.
So I'd like to take a quick minute to recognize him.
Hey, Chief, come on up here. Hey, Chief Alvarez, come on up here. You're not going to get away like that.
He's going to be mad at me the rest of the week.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, he's, he's leaving a big void for us. He's worked with most of you over the years and done a lot of great things for the city.
He helped us win All-American City Award. Where are you going, man?
Ready for an invite.
Well, 30 years, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You must have started when you were 12, wasn't it?
Yes, it's about, just about.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, don't tell him that. Yeah, we, we appreciate you, but we, we're going to do something for, when's your official day?
Three days and a wake-up, so Friday morning. 28th, 28th.
All right, we'll, we'll deal with you offline.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but thank you for the services that you've rented to this community. 30 years is a long time, we appreciate you. Let's give him another round. All right, Chief, losing a good man there.
Yeah, um, but, you know, we always want to see people leave happy, healthy and go enjoy the second part of their life.
Yes, sir.
All right, so you'll see before you tonight a summary of highlights and milestones from 2024. A few that I'm most excited about are the addition of our first-ever full-time fire investigator, a transition to two civilian community risk reduction specialists, firefighter cancer screenings for the first time, and more than a dozen documented saves from fires and rescues in 2024. As always, we start with Operations Division. The annual incident count increased to 28,894 calls for service this year. That's an increase of 796 from 2023. Medical and rescue calls continue to be a lion's share of our response, is 66%. False fire alarms follow at 10%, with fires being 4% of our annual response. One thing we're proud of is all facets of our response time decreased in 2024. We're proud to report that 90% of the time in 2024, from the time the person dialed 911, there was a Fayetteville fire truck sitting in their front yard or on the scene of their accident or wherever they're at. And that's something to be proud of and we, we thank you for your support. The FFD responded to 1,138 fires in 2024. There were 222 structural fires, which continued to trend downward from previous years. 50 of those started in the kitchen and we were able to contain the fire to the room of origin 63% of the time. 25 of those fires were determined to be intentionally set. There was one civilian fire fatality, 33 civilian injuries and eight firefighter injuries. There were 148 vehicle fires and six lithium ion battery fires. The top fire losses for 2024, the number one fire loss was the Kenlaw's Grocery Store, followed by two multifamily dwellings. 18,894 medical rescue type calls. As you can see, the overdose caused in Narcan given are continuing to trend downward. You'll notice that cardiac arrest number's down. And the reason for that is that one thing we do is continuously reflect on our response. What can we do better? What kind of treatments can we provide? What kind of equipment do we need to provide positive patient outcomes? So what we did was historically, we've included in cardiac arrests, obvious deaths and things like do not resuscitate orders, which there's nothing we can do about. So we've cleaned up our data a little bit so we can better check ourselves to make sure what we're doing is accurate and is there anything better we can do? Our hazardous materials responses were 327 in 2024, 110 natural gas leaks, 30 carbon monoxide emergencies and 34 fuel spills. Move on to human resources. On January 1st, we had one sworn vacancy. You'll see the chart shows 12, but that includes the 11 approved over hires. One civilian vacancy. Since then, we filled the civilian vacancy, which is our deputy fire marshal, but increased our sworn vacancies to eight. And as of Friday, we'll have two more with two retirements. We're currently in the hiring process and if you add the 11 approved over hires, we projected 20 to 25-person academy starting in May. But something to remember is once those people start in May, we won't see them on a fire truck till November due to the training process. 31 resignations, six retirements and two dismissals in 2024. Like the manager was saying, we had eight reinstatements and that's due largely in part to you all's support and your pay increases in July. 10 of the 31 that left for other fire departments. 21 of the 31 left the fire service altogether for one reason or another. The demographics at the end of 2024 remained fairly consistent. Of the 31 that resigned, 12 were minorities, three of those were females and 10 of those 12 left the fire service. Next is our diversity and diversity recruitment numbers. You'll see a slight trend down in that, but don't be alarmed, I can explain. Recruit class 124 was over 50% underrepresented population, which is our best ever. That class was 22 folks, 12 of which were minorities. However, due to retention issues in the fall, we had to do a certified hire to address compounded vacancies and the expedited need for certified firefighters. That class yielded a much lower underrepresented population of two out of 17 firefighters. And that's what led to the decrease. I promise you that number will rebound in the, by the end of this year. Our career development and training summaries, the department completed 126,386 total training hours in 2024. As we move into the fire marshals. As we move into the fire marshal's office, here are the numbers for 2024. With the support of the city manager, we were able to add an additional fire inspector in the fall to help us meet the growing demand of fire inspections and state-mandated inspection Here you'll see the top five fire code violations. Trouble with fire protection systems continue to be the top violation, and that's, you know, fire alarm systems, smoke alarms connected to those, different sensors and things going bad. Finally, we're going to community risk reduction. In 2024, the FFD interacted with over thirty-one thousand adults and twenty thousand children. We trained one thousand six hundred seventy-nine people in hands-only CPR, installed nineteen hundred and thirty-two smoke alarms, three hundred and thirty-six CO alarms, and a hundred and sixty-three child safety seats, all free of charge, making our residents safer. We're excited. We have a program coming up with the Economic Community Development Group. They were able to find some funding for us, and we're gonna be working with the E. Smith High School to install stove-top smoke, uh, smoke, stove, stove-top smoke suppressors, fire suppressors, in low-income housing. So we're excited about that. That thing always trips me up, too. If you've never heard me say, "Smoke alarms save lives." We don't want any person ever to close their eyes at night without a working smoke alarm in their house. We've come and provide those free of charge at any time if you'll give us a call at four-three-three-eleven-sixteen, or scan our QR code. And with that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
All right. Uh, Chief, I don't see any.
Perfect.
I would say, oh, wait a minute. Spoke too soon. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I always have to lift up our first responders, because I think they go undeserved and underappreciated. But Chief Dove, I just want to ask you two simple questions. You talked about lithium battery fires. How are those blankets working?
We haven't used them yet.
You haven't used them yet? So what do you use for those battery fires? You just using them in the parking decks? Or is that the only place?
We would use those for a car fire either in a park. We bought them for parking decks to save the structure, but we could also use them on the side of the interstate nonetheless. So far in the city, knock on wood, we've not had a electric vehicle fire. These are all small scooter, scooter batteries, drill batteries, small appliance batteries.
Well, I hope you don't get mad at me at this next question, because we talked about it before, and that's your fire marshal's office. And I know you're short on fire inspectors, which is pertinent to make sure we get our citizens' code violations in order to protect them. So what do we do, need to do to enhance that vacancy? Or is it anything that we can do?
It's in the budget. City manager will be bringing that to you in the next few months.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. All right. Chief, thank you. Keep up the good work, sir. All right. Four point, nine point oh four. We have a police department. Chief Braden, good evening, sir.
Mayor, we need to receive the report, please.
Okay. All right. Moving too fast. Who was the, is it Councilmember Davis? Well, Councilmember Honduras, seconded by Davis. All right. Discussion on the motion to receive the report. All right. Council look to you for your action. Who are we missing? Ms. Paula? Councilmember Maynard, what are you doing there? Need some healing oil. All right. Motion carries. All right. Chief Braden, how are you, sir?
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Here to give the yearly report for 2024 from the Fayetteville Police Department. We have some good things we're gonna talk about tonight, some of the lower crime across the city. We've got some things we're gonna talk about, some, some hurdles we have in the upcoming year with some of our juvenile crime. But as usual, we'll talk about crime statistics, crime trends and analysis throughout the city, our crime-fighting strategies, and some community engagement efforts that we've had for the total year of 2024. As we start all the quarterly reports, we start with the overall numbers as they relate to persons' crimes, property crimes, felony arrests, and misdemeanor arrests. As you can see, our person crime numbers are down by nearly eight-point-four percent, eight-point, point-four percent, and property the same. The only red that we saw on that top line was felony arrests were down. If you go back to previous meetings, we talk about the correlations. If I have less felonies occurring, it only makes sense that I have less arrests that are occurring. So that's not a number that causes me great concern. But if we look at down at the bottom, total crime is down by nearly ten percent. That's one thousand six hundred and seventy-two less than we had last year. And if you remember, last year was a record year for the past decade. Total arrests are down by only one-point-four percent. So that's only a small percentage-wise for the actual reduction in those arrests. As I stated earlier, we have our lowest year of crime in the past ten years. That's coming off last year's record-setting ten-year low. So we've added two our successes in 2023 and carried those over to 2024. There's a thirty-five percent decrease in crime since 2014. And, and just to put that in a matter of perspective, that's over seven thousand one hundred and sixty-nine incidents less than we had a decade ago. That averages out to about twenty incidents of crime within our city per day. As we look at the proactive police work, you know, our traffic stops are down slightly. Again, with all the complaints that we get through Community Watch and complaints we get on our website. But I would say this, that is probably has to do with some of the efforts we're placing in other places and some of the staffing issues we've had over the year. Our crimes against society, this is something that I'd like to see come back up. You know, these are the weapons charges, the drug charges. We know that in 2024, 2023, a lot of our violent crime is related and stemmed from these crimes against society charges, illegal carrying of firearms, possession of firearms by felons, and the drug charges that we saw across our city. Criminal apprehensions, again, that was, we discussed that in the slide before, only down by one-point-four percent, but we'd expect that to fluctuate, go up and down with the actual number of felony incidents. We focus on violent crime, taking a look at the numbers across the board. You see everything we have listed. This is the same categories we list quarter to quarter. We're all in the green there. Our homicides are down by forty-eight percent, having fifty-two incidents with fifty-three victims in 2023. We cut that nearly in half in 2024. You know, we'll talk a little bit later about some of the efforts we did with domestic violence, and some of the strategies we had while working with our federal partners through Vicap and things of that nature. But again, the things that we look at for violent crime, rape, aggravated assault, all down double digits, you know, twenty-two percent, almost twenty-five percent. Shooting into occupied properties, down by almost twenty percent across the board from the previous year. We took a look at our shooting incidents. They primarily result from escalation of interpersonal conflicts or drug-related robberies. Those were the bulk majority of our shootings, ag assaults, and homicides. Over three hundred and eighty-five firearms were reported stolen year-to-date. This results in an abundance of illegal firearms in the hands of felons and juveniles within our community. So I expect that as we move on this year, again, we'll refocus our efforts on how do we get the motor vehicle B and Es, the weapons that are taken from those, those unsecured firearms, secured better to limit those numbers. And our reduction in the homicide numbers, like I said, contributed to the reduced number of child deaths and domestic-related homicides this year that we saw in, from what we saw in 2023. Again, can't say this is our lowest year of homicides, but if you look on the baseline for, for the, this year, we're closer to the averages that we've seen primarily across the past decade. You know, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three were some of the anomalies that we saw there. Again, looking at some of the domestic issues, some of the drug-related robberies, you know, I think we've addressed those, and we'll talk about those further in the report. This slide, overdoses. Again, doesn't look like we came down a lot from 2023, but if you go back to 2022, we were up close to fifty incidents of overdose during, during that year. So again, a significant increase. We've been able to hold those averages from twenty-three to twenty-four. You know, we really focus on our faith in action, on going out, working with lead, North Carolina Harm Reduction, handing out Narcan and things like that in communities that were most affected by the overdose deaths. You know, this year, we're looking to switch up that and looking at areas that were the most proliferated with crime, specifically violent crime. And not surprising, they're pretty much the same areas. Okay? You know, we knew this when we did our sound thinking shot spotter evaluations where the shootings and those things were occurring, and we noticed that a lot of those were overlapped with the overdose and the violent crime. I've been asked the, the number of incidents that involve homicide and a firearm. Again, seventy, seventy percent of our firearm homicides involve the use of a firearm, and ninety-two percent of our suicides. This is overall the average of all violent crime. As stated, you look, we're in a ten-year low, the highest year being 2015. We've seen a seventeen percent decrease since 2015. Talking about the work we've done with domestic violence, you know, our misdemeanor arrests were down from the previous year by forty-two percent. Our felonies were down by twenty-five percent. If you look, our simple assaults-related domestic violence were up by less than one percent. Again, this is just a fraction of a number there. For total crimes involving domestic violence being down nearly five percent. This can be attributed a lot to the work we've done with the Phoenix Center. Remember, after the events that we had in 2023, when a quarter of our homicides were domestic-related, we did a departmental re-trainer across the board on our response to domestic violence. We partnered with the Phoenix Center for them to do additional follow-ups, twenty-four to forty-eight hours after the initial incident. You know, once we get people away from the initial shock of what happened, you know, their, their, their thoughts and ideas about how to handle that may change, just to follow up to make sure that there's no second, second thoughts towards a prosecution. When we took a look at some of our homicides, we wanted to really look at how many of those were there instances of domestic violence already in the home that officers have responded to. And we just wanted to make sure that we took those options off the table of, no, if there's an arrest that should be made, it will be made. If there's a follow-up and a chance to prosecute that further down the road, we'd seize all those opportunities. And again, you can see the difference in the reductions that we have from 2023 to 2024. Sound thinking and shot spotter. Again, Hamilton District remains the high producer for shot spotter alerts. When we look at the number of alerts and the casings recovered, again, naturally with the higher number of alerts, the more casings we can expect to find. When we only had two hundred and eighty-nine total alerts and over four hundred and sixty-one, that means there's a lot of events where multiple shots are being fired. A lot of these do result from someone just going outside and emptying a magazine out into the woods. But, but again, a lot of shots being fired, a lot of opportunity for us to really test the efficacy of shot spotter. Is it alerting us? Are we out there? Are we able to locate the shell casings and make the NIBIN leads? And if you look to the right side of the table, that's what that would indicate to you. If you look at the pie graph at the bottom, we look at NIBIN leads with nine-one-one calls and NIBIN leads without nine-one-one calls. So about forty-two percent of the leads that we've generated, there was no associated nine-one-one call. So without sound thinking or shot spotter, those are leads that we would not have generated. And when we talk about that's the shell casing comparison, where we tie one shooting incident related to another shooting incident somewhere within the city, state, or nation. So again, I really think that, that paints a picture of what we're getting, the things that are, the value that's being brought to the table that we wouldn't have been able to receive without those nine-one-one calls. This really illustrates the number of alerts compared with shot spotter and with shot spotter plus a nine-one-one call. If you look out of the twelve, there were twelve guns recovered with a nine-one-one call, but there's an additional three, almost a quarter of that, without the shot, the nine-one-one call. So shot spotter led to the seizure of almost another twenty-five percent of what we got with a nine-one-one call. You look at the total numbers of arrests, you know, we arrested eleven people with a shot spotter and a nine-one-one call, but there's only seven that were the shot spotter alone, but there was no associated nine-one-one call. So again, it's putting us in the places to make interactions, to intervene with subjects who are armed with a weapon. Quick overview of our federal partnerships as we work with the U.S. Attorney's Office. There have been over twenty-four individuals federally sentenced in this past year. We've indicted an additional ten that will be pending in federal trial, over seventy-six thousand dollars, and seized assets, and over thirty firearms seized and taken off the street. Start to break down property crime. Again, this is the trend, trend line here, a forty-seven percent decrease since 2014. And, and that's a lot of actual property crimes that, that we're talking about almost fifty percent, cut in half. And, you know, significant job for the officers there. We look at the crimes. Again, these are the ones that we report on every quarter. We're down significant numbers in our burglaries. Okay, those are the residential's and motor vehicle B and Es. The only one really jumps out that's a great concern, and it's been the trend since last year. We spoke about motor vehicle thefts and how we already anticipated that last year. We were gonna come in higher than normal, and that trend continues into 2025. Shoplifting, we've seen a great increase in shoplifting, over twenty percent from the previous year. We look at it, we have groups of people that come to Fayetteville to steal from our organized big-box stores. We classify that as organized retail crimes. These groups from other jurisdictions routinely come to the city and steal from those big-box stores. Violators have become more aggressive in their attempts to steal and evade apprehension. We've had people that have pulled out OC spray and threatened loss prevention officers and people who attempt to stop their efforts to shoplift. The most commonly targeted items are health and beauty aids, designer clothing, power tools, and cleaning supplies. If you look at our hotspots across the city, you know, it's always gonna be around the Walmarts, Lowe's, the Home Depots. So our district captains have really been focused specifically the end of twenty-four and the beginning of twenty-five on shoplifting crimes across the city. Juvenile data. We talked about, you know, I had concerns last year with some of the juvenile crimes that we saw that were on the uptick around the city. If you look to the right side of this, this slide, I highlighted several in red that, that really stood out to me. If you look in all of 2023, there were a total of one hundred and fifty-two documented assaults involving juveniles. In 2024, there were a total of two hundred and forty-five. That's nearly a hundred, uh, increase of a hundred incidents in the span of a year. If you look at the B and Es, there are seventy-eight total in 2023 and a hundred and thirty-nine reported in 2024. Again, significant increases in those numbers. And I've showed a decrease in motor, in B and Es across the board, but we're seeing an uptick within our juvenile crime as it relates to those B and Es. Robbery total of six for 2023, nineteen reported in 2024. Motor vehicle theft, where we've seen an uptick, and, and we were in the red for the past two years in a row. There was a total of fifty-one juvenile incidents related to motor vehicle theft in 2023, ninety-seven reported in 2024. So again, I think this is something that, that the, the department has to, you know, continue to look at and address, and, and work with our other community partners to decrease the juvenile crime within Sorry about that. So with our school resource officer program, this is an outline of our calls for service and our reports. And I think this is gonna be significant as we look further in the future. I said that, you know, once we start policing something we never policed before, we're pulling all those calls for service into our, and factoring those into our quarterly reports now, where last year, those three hundred and forty-three calls at elementary schools weren't factored into what we had to do. They weren't factored into our calls of service, and those thirty-five incidents weren't factored into the crimes that we reported on last year. If you look across the board, you know, several hundred in each of the categories for calls for service. Most of the elementary school, middle schools, there's not a high reporting of incidents, but if you look at a hundred and thirty-eight in our high schools, you know, that's the most significant increase there. We're looking at potentially, you know, larcenies, assaults, things that are, that are gonna affect some of those property crimes and violent crime rates. We currently have eleven certified SROs in the schools due to the need. We have one extra towards, I think there's, we said we'd have ten. We've had several large fights, had the Douglas Bird High School. We're having some problems at the Howard Hall. So, you know, we, we put an extra person in there for officer safety reasons to ensure that we have our, we're keeping our officers safe, and they have backup close to them when they have those serious incidents in the school. We maintain about sixty-four part-time traffic control officers. This is fluctuating, goes up and down. We're constantly in the process of hiring for those. A total of nine hundred and forty-six calls for service and over two hundred and twenty incident reports. Our drug-related seizures. As you look, we are down from the previous year in 2023, but, you know, I would have to say that 2023 were very good years for the seizure of sixty-nine point four kilos. In the thirty years I've been here, I don't think we've made seizures that large in all of those categories. In 2023, there was sixty-nine kilos of cocaine, over fifty-four kilos of meth. meth, fifty-nine kilos of heroin. And if you look at what we did in two thousand twenty-four, still significant numbers, over thirty-seven kilos of cocaine, forty-five kilos of meth, fifty-six kilos of heroin. And if you look at the twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-nine pounds of marijuana, that is in relation to the Operation Vapor Trail, the federal task force that came through, dismantled basically several of the smoke and vapor shops that were involved in the sale of THC products, not CBD, not hemp, but marijuana. Across our city, there was a total of sixty-four search warrants served in a matter of about three days, and you see some of the pictures that are related to the seizures we had from that operation. Firearms seized is still a significant number. You look at a thousand fifty-four, down slightly from the previous year, but a significant number of firearms seized. I trigger finger too happy. Salvation Army, this breaks down our homeless officer, we combined in the last quarter of the year, our homelessness and our mental health response to one liaison. Just shows the sheer number of calls that we get as it relates to homeless individuals and mental health issues on a day-to-day basis. Deanna Bragg, she does a good job of managing those calls, making referrals, and helping people seek the programs that will best benefit them throughout our city, through our partners and our day resource center. Our nine-one-one communication center, police calls for service dispatched, over a hundred and eighty thousand calls were dispatched to police officers. Again, they work not just for the police department, but they also dispatch fire. They don't just dispatch calls, they answer nine-one-one calls. You see, there's a significant increase in the number of nine-one-one calls, admin calls for a total of over three hundred and seventy-one thousand times that those dispatchers at the PSAP answer the phone throughout the year. The bottom side is more of the administrative side of the house. We do our internals, that we get requests, they get requests they have to fulfill for recordings and to internal investigations and to the public, and then the quality assurance reviews that they do to make sure that they're in compliance with all the standards and their accreditations. Traffic enforcement, like I've stated this again and again, probably the most common complaint that we receive with the police department is reference to driving. We saw an increase in the number of fatalities across our city last year. A lot of those were related to pedestrians. So we had the two thousand twenty-four No More Reckless Driving, Distracted Driving campaign, and we actually did some proactive stuff for pedestrian traffic, you know, jaywalking and trying to inform the public based on the number of actual fatalities that involved As we get into our traffic stop numbers, again, you can see the map of the city where all of the traffic stop incidents occur. It is pretty evenly dispersed across our city. You know, you can't, there's no way to say that there's one specific area that's being over-serviced with our traffic stop and motor vehicle violations. Again, as you look at the ten-year trend line, you know, we're getting, the past two years have been more in line with what the averages have been across that past ten years. Again, the significance of two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two COVID years and post-COVID years, limited interactions and trying to avoid those unnecessary interactions during those COVID years. Total number of vehicle stops, comparison in two thousand twenty-three, there were a total of fifty thousand, slightly less, about two thousand less, about forty-eight thousand for last year. Again, our ratios are pretty much the same, but we had about a three-point decrease in black drivers, white drivers at thirty-five percent, and other drivers still maintained at four percent. If you look at our search rates, out of black drivers, there were one thousand one hundred ninety-five vehicles that were searched. Out of that, forty-nine point seven-nine percent were found to have drugs in them, and seventeen percent were found to have weapons. If you look at white drivers, two hundred and nineteen vehicle searches, forty-six point five seven percent, and thirteen point two percent for weapons. And other drivers, thirty-five percent had drugs and twelve percent had weapons. Our use of force, Officer Professor Sanders, in two thousand twenty-three, we had a reduction in our numbers of use of force. We had a reduction in our number of internal investigations, and our citizen complaints remain the same, and our compliments dropped by three. If we break down our use of force, I think the most significant thing on this page would be that out of the six thousand eight hundred and seven felony misdemeanor arrests made in two thousand twenty-four, a total of sixty-six incidents resulted in a use of force, representing less than one percent of all arrests made. Departmental staffing, as we look, we do have a total of thirty-seven sworn vacancies that are frozen right now. In addition to that, we have eleven SRO positions that we didn't have in two thousand twenty-three. Since July first, two thousand twenty-four, we've had a total of nineteen sworn lateral hires. One of the challenges I gave to our recruiting section was twenty laterals by the end of the year, based on the new step plan. They missed it by one. So again, I think they met, they stepped up to the challenge and really produced. Again, if we can get those same kind of results for the first half of the year in two thousand twenty-five and get another twenty, we could potentially be down to minus our thirty-seven frozen positions, down to about twenty to thirty vacancies by the end of two thousand twenty-five. In addition to that, they had five hiring events conducted at the FPD Training Center and one that was outside at a, was that in this year or last year? The men in church, that was this year. But we had five total at the training center, where we really put the pressure to get those lateral recruits in, to hire someone who's already certified and save that BLET Academy When we look at departmental staffing, it breaks it down, a total of sixty-two resignations for sworn, eleven retirements, and eight dismissed. I think it's key to point out that sixty-five percent decrease in resignations since the implementation of the Officer Step Plan, July first, two thousand twenty-four. There were a total of forty-six resignations between January and June, and from July to December, there was only a total of sixteen. Out of the people that resigned earlier in the year, four have returned work to the city of Fayetteville after the pay plan and step plan was introduced. So again, thank you for the step plan. I think it had a deep impact on our, some of our staffing levels and slowed down that those resignations that were coming in early in the year. Again, faith in action. We closed out the year, we were still focusing on our heroin and our overdose. Again, we had sixteen-plus groups, nonprofits, churches, and community providers, peer support specialists, mental health providers have participated in events throughout the year, focused on addiction, poverty, and mental health in our communities to prevent crime and disorder. And you see the numbers down here, over seven hundred and seventy-nine contacts, over two hundred and two units of Narcan that were distributed, food and groceries to over three hundred and eighty-one people. And that's not just the one time you get a bag, you know, Sergeant Caldwell's worked with other programs in the community where they continue on to get some of that, those bags to address those food insecurities across the people they touched. Over three hundred and nine hygiene kits been handed out, and then Salvation and Prayer, that's key because I really called upon our faith-based community to provide a lot of the support and the manpower that goes into these faith-inaction events. As we look at other programs and things that occurred in the last quarter of the year, we graduated our second police academy of the year. The Pack the Cruiser event, first time doing this. I want, I say that it was a great success. If you look at that middle bottom picture, that is our comstat room, and it was, the walls were lined with toys. We had an event going on at two locations. We had the Walmart on Ramsey Street, and we had Dick's Sporting Goods over off Clifdale Road, and thousands of toys were collected. We supported Food for the Soul, who does the big giveaway over at the Clifdale Rec Center before Christmas, and the Mayor Maximus Foundation that supports foster kids and abused kids within our community. We had our Shop with the Cop, that is promoted through our PAL program. Touched quite a few kids this year. We had two major events, one at Dick's Sporting Goods and one at Target. And our Halloween Trick or Treat, we got a little bit out of order there, it should have been a little bit earlier in the slide deck, but we were out there giving out candy for Halloween. Our PAL Breakfast with Santa. And of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about how we beat the brakes off the fire department in the softball game. And that picture was taken before he lost. But outside of that, I'll be open for questions.
All right, Chief, thank you. Do have a couple, we've got Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin and then Green.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for the presentation. I thought I was going to have a lot of questions, but I don't. I have a lot of compliments that I want to bring forth to you along with your staff. First, like I told you at our city-county liaison meeting, this bittersweet, like I said, I can't speak for everyone, each one of my colleagues, but I am very appreciative for you and the work that you do, your commitment to keeping our community safe. I think sometimes it goes unnoticed, you know, you along with your officers serve over two hundred and nine thousand people.
Yes.
That's a lot of people, considering we're short-staffed. And I'm gonna go down my list because I don't want to leave anything out, but the more you talk through this presentation, the more things I jot it down to let you know how much I appreciate you and your staff. First, I do want to thank the Fayetteville Police Foundation because they show up just about at every presentation that you do, and that's great to have that support along with your fellow council members. As we talked about the homicide, one homicide is way too many, one burglary or assault is way too many. But you did not mention, and I don't understand why you don't mention that, I think you don't like giving yourself a pat on the back, but talk about the correlation from homicides versus those individuals that have been arrested.
So yes, I think we cleared up this year, we should be at that ninety-nine percent mark. We should have closed out our final homicide from two thousand twenty-four, so I think we're sitting at a hundred percent. And for the homicides we've experienced so far in two thousand twenty-five, out of the eleven incidents and the thirteen victims, we've arrested all but one, if I'm not mistaken.
And that's, I think that's, look. And you say, you say it with so much, look, so calm and collective, like that's a big deal for our community, that that's ninety-nine percent a success rate with catching these individuals that committed these crimes. Thank you for showing presence in our community, just like you mentioned when at our community watch meetings, that's one of the first things they say, we want police sitting on this side of the roller over here, and you guys do just that, it feel like we have more officers versus a shortage in officers. And also, our officers are also in the school system.
Correct.
Right now. And we've talked about that in the past as far as that community presence, that engagement in the community, so that shows presence there. And you already talked about the funding, well, the programs, and we talked about the OCS, how that could eventually tie into each other. But just thank you for just building that relationship in a community. I started rambling off, I think I probably missed some things, but to sum it all up, thank you for everything you've done for our community along with your staff. And to our fire department, I don't think I'm showing favoritism either. And one more, and I was gonna say one more thing I do want to mention, too, the call center.
Yes, ma'am.
We tend to forget about those individuals because whenever there's an emergency, that's the first person who hear our voice. So thank you to the representative for our call center.
Well, and you know what, over the past couple of weeks, a lot of people talked about the success the Fayetteville Police Department has had, and I garner a lot of that attention. But I told someone the other day, I didn't arrest anybody last year, I didn't take a nine-one-one call last year. That is the men and women that sit behind me and what they do every day. I sort of come up with a game plan and they execute, so thank you to them as well.
All right, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Go to Mayor Pro Tim and then Councilmember Green. Oh, okay, thought it listed from the top. Go ahead, Councilmember.
He reads things backwards, but it's okay. You know, I just like giving you a hard time.
I know.
Thank you, Chief, for another great report. I'm always fascinated by the numbers because I'm a numbers person, if you might didn't know that. I always like looking at our city manager, because he knows, I'm gonna be the one that answers, asks the questions about the numbers. But I probably should know the answer to this, I'm gonna admit that I do not. If you have somebody that transitions out of the military and their military police, security forces, and the Air Force, is that lateral, or is that a, is there some type of reduced BLET class, or what does that look like?
So, no, it doesn't lateral, it doesn't transfer. Any military training doesn't directly transfer to the civilian community. What we are in the process of working with, and I know Major Hunt has been talking about this one, that transitional period when they're set to get out of the military, you know, where the military will pay for some on-offboarding training, such as, and would BLET qualify for that, where we get people that were trained while they're still getting paid by the military that could transition over to the civilian market once they get out. And I think, you know, that is something we'll probably see more of over the next year, especially after Major Hunt has the ability to sit down and truly see what the program offers and how that could benefit us and move forward in the future.
Right. I would love to see that because I think that when we're trying to keep folks here and keep them from moving and give them a reason to stay, that's a population that we could capture easily because it does kind of translate. Some of the jobs that, for Bragg, are difficult to translate those into civilian life. That one doesn't particularly seem like a stretch, that and firefighters as well. So I know that some great folks come out of there and we sometimes tend to lose them, so I would love to see that. And then one kudos to you guys, thank you for providing me, I told you the other night, thank you for providing some entertainment for friends that I had at my house on a Friday night. We all drove in from a restaurant, went to my house because I'm the closest one, and there were officers on my stretch of the highway I live off of, and they were stopping people right and left.
What did you do?
And I did not do anything, everybody, I did not do anything.
She told me she sat and watched.
We just sat, we sat and watched, we popped popcorn and went outside on the front porch for about two hours and watched them stop because I, that's one thing I hear in my neighborhood is traffic and the flow of traffic is just moving way too fast. And if you'll notice, all the sounds that we've heard tonight, that's what I hear a lot. But I recognize that a lot of that noise is not speeding, it's just noise, which I, people can't separate the two in their head, I think, for the majority. But I say that in jest, but I'm sincere when I say thank you for being visible, as Councilwoman Banks-McLaughlin said, thank you for being visible because it is a stretch where there tends to be speeding, and there's a school in that stretch, and it's just vital that we pay attention. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Green. All right, Mayor Pro Tim.
Am I next?
You are next.
Okay.
You popped at the top already.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Chief, thank you, you know my feelings about the police force, and thank you for everything that you do. It is, looking at the numbers, it's just interesting to look at, you know, ten years back, that when things, you know, sometimes things get off-kilter and we just don't realize how lucky we are when things are good. So I appreciate all your hard work and all our first responders. But I do have a question, can we go back to the slide where the juveniles were? So, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was. So, I'm looking at all the juveniles, and just for the listening, that is eighteen and under, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, and the reason why I'm asking is, if you don't have the data, you don't know how to solve an issue. So my question is, a lot of these incidents that are happening, are they in one part of the city? Are they in one kind of school district? Or are there, you know, is there somewhere that we can see? you know, is there somewhere that we can see where we need to put resources? Is it something we need to be doing in our, in our, um, in our Parks and Rec Department? Is there something that we need to have more attention to? And that, that was the question. Is it in one area? Is it a group or is it just everywhere?
So individually, if you look, if you really drill down into it, we have certain groups that we are aware of and watch, uh, that are across our city. We have, uh, individuals that have been picked up two, three, four times for stealing motor vehicles. That makes it easy to know who your potential suspects are. But no, there's not one specific area in the city. We have three distinct districts across our city, and they each struggle with motor vehicle BNEs where kids are going out into the neighborhoods and pulling door handles at night. They have all had their individual struggles with motor vehicle thefts. From Campbellton District, you know, to what they have at some, a lot of our, our apartment complexes down there on, on the north side of town there, all the way to all the apartment complexes out there on the west side of Fayetteville. We see it come and go, and it's basically crimes of opportunity. You know, we really need to focus in on our, secure your weapons, lock your cars, do the things that need to be done to make sure you don't become a victim. I think that's probably gonna be one of the strategies we focus on in, in the, uh, in, in 2025. So, again, you know, when you, when you go shopping, you gotta go to where the grocery store is at, you know? Uh, you gotta go to these neighborhoods where they got volumes of cars, where you can go around and pull door handles and, and get lucky. It's a, it's a, it's a numbers game. If I pull 50 door handles, odds are I'm gonna find one that's unlocked. So again, it's not one neighborhood. You see it actually, it'll flare up in a neighborhood and it'll go away. They'll come back in a few weeks, a few months, you know? Uh, we're seeing a lot of people that come in, we have organized crime, that, that, that people come in from out of town, you know? And if you look at some of the rural areas of Hope County out there on the west side, you know, if they want to pull door handles, they come into the city. They approach the apartment complexes right there along Clifdel, Rayford Road. So again, it, I, I think it's, they take advantage of the, what the city offers in sheer volume of, of opportunity. And we see it not just in our juveniles, but in some more organized groups that are coming from out of town.
So the assaults, um, I guess they've gone up more than anything that I'm really seeing through here.
About 100, uh, nearly 100 incidents in, in, in the year.
Right, okay.
Again, I can't say that there's one specific area, okay? Would you, would you, you know, we look at incidents that we had at the mall that one time, there was this large fight in the parking lot. Those kids were from all over our city. They just convened and met up in that area, and that's where the incident actually occurred. Uh, you know, we're not seeing it where, you know, that, that they're fighting inside the, the living room of a house. That's more of a domestic, you'll see with a brother and a sister or something of that nature. But assaults that really concern us are when we have group violence or the gang violence that's associated with.
Commercial area, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, before I go back to Councilmember Banks McLoughlin for round two, two quick questions. One, you said you had some good success on the lateral hires.
Yes.
Where are you marketing that? 84,000 is the, is the, was that the max that a lateral can earn?
Yes. So not everybody that we've hired on lateral hires are coming in maxed out. I, I think that, that now that there's a true step plan and they can say, okay, I've been a cop for five years, this is where I fall into the plan, this is where I can plan to be five years from now. It gives people the confidence to make that jump from where they currently work at to the city of Fayetteville. Uh, you know, I've had, not to say where they come from, you know, where, but we've had several that have come from that have just been two or three-year officers at, 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 uh, agencies within the region, that they just like knowing that, okay, yes, there is a step plan. I know what I'm gonna be making two years from now. I know what I'll be making four years from now. I know what I'll be making six years from now.
Okay. So, so the marketing of it, we're doing it regionally or you do it a little broader or how?
Well, again, we've hired laterals from, from, uh, furthest way we've gotten one, uh, last year was from Arizona. We've had a couple come down from New York. So we, we are relying on, you know, uh, some, our contacts and really utilizing officers who work here as recruiters, uh, friends, family that they know of. Uh, you know, the Fayetteville market, you know, Fort Bragg brings in a lot of potential, you know, the lady from Arizona, her husband came to Fort Bragg and, and she was, uh, caught a ride with him and said, hey, I'm gonna put him for the Fayetteville Police Department. So we got a lot of people who relocate to the area with spouses that are military related that are looking for jobs as well. So, again, I think we really take advantage of the, the totality of it. But yes, for, it's easier for me to get someone who's already certified in the state of North Carolina. And I think what really the paint plant has done is given us some, some clout within the region of, no, you can come here and this is what you're gonna make.
Some certainty. Okay. Last question I have about, uh, technology, cameras, AI. Um, do you have any, uh, any recommendations about what you're missing? I know we've got pretty.
We've got a couple of things that are in our CIP process. When, once the budget cycle finishes, we'll make a determination of, of how we purchase those things. I know that we do have, uh, some asset forfeiture possibilities for some of those things. Uh, and, and the recommendation would be, and, and I would caution this, I know there was talk of, of how can technology replace a body? In police work, it doesn't work that way. Okay? The technology slows down the time it takes us to review videos. It slows down, it, it speeds things up for us, but everything has to be validated and, and researched and, and put into play by an actual police officer, a detective, someone who carries a badge and a gun in order to make those presentations possible. Things like ShotSpotter, yes, they're a tool that will put us in the right place at the right time to have an interaction, but it's still gonna take those interactions from the, the men and women of law enforcement who, uh, who go out there and answer those calls.
I get it. All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Banks McLoughlin. Oh, well, let me go to, uh, Councilmember McNair, uh, for her first round. But you haven't spoken, so it's, yeah. Oh, okay. Well, I like the sound of that.
Go ahead.
That was you too? Okay. Councilmember Davis, were you doing a motion?
No, I was gonna say something.
Second round, sir. First round, okay.
Yeah. So I just wanted to reiterate what you were saying. I, I know the police department, that department cannot replace electronics, cannot replace bodies, but I'm just saying in other capacities, there are opportunities to go beyond just the scope of people. So I just wanted to make, make sure that was clear.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Councilmember Banks McLoughlin.
Well, mine was a motion. Was it another question?
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I've been timing everybody now, so don't cut me off. Everybody got about five and a half minutes.
I don't believe that.
They've been, Mayor pretend the most.
Use the ball with me.
Chief Braden, the 10-year low year-over-year, the 31%, 35% low over 10 years, and you said 70% decrease in violent crime, uh, over 10 years. Um, I think those are all things that I know that you're very proud of. I still see people saying that they don't feel it. How would you help us kind of communicate to them that, you know, these are the numbers, you know, and, and, and we should be proud of these numbers? Um, how, how do you recommend that we sort of combat some of the anecdotal feelings about, you know, what is statistically proven?
So, again, you know, if you look at the tragedy that occurred, uh, Friday of last week, you know, I, I really pay attention to the comments that we get on social media. You know, people talked about, you know, how they got zero information from the press, press conference, okay? Again, their opinion because they're expecting more, okay? And I think when we talk about violent crime, people always expect just a little bit more. And again, we're, we're working on those things, trying to give them just a little bit more. When you have, you know, 11 incidents of homicide in the first, you know, uh, what, what, six weeks of the, of the new year, you know, that, that, that creates a perception that we gotta go out there and we gotta let people know that, no, these aren't random incidents of violence that are occurring to people within our city. Though tragic, you know, there, there was no indication that they, that I, as a police chief or any of the people that work behind me would have had to know to have an intervention out there on, uh, in that, uh, the crossings community out there. So, uh, I, I say, you know, the best way to truly understand is to really, uh, last, and I didn't do it last year, we had a couple, but come to the open houses, come to the police academy where you get to understand how we calculate the numbers, how we tabulate those, how we, you know, uh, investigate crime, all the things that we do to ensure that our city is safe. And I think that's the start in, in that shift in perceptions. It's not by me spouting out a number or posting it out on Facebook. It's about people have a true understanding of how we get to those numbers, okay? Have a true understanding of what the numbers were a decade ago. Understand that, yes, you know, we can say why we probably have less BNEs of residences, because 10, 10, 15 years ago LCD, uh, you know, LED TVs were running $5, $6, $7, $800 for a TV. You can go to Walmart and you get a 70-inch for $400 bucks today. So again, as, as things change within our society, so do the crime trends. And as a police department, we have to stay on top of those and make sure we're adjusting the way we do business. So even if you came to a police academy four, five, six years ago, uh, our, our way of doing business and how we approach crime has changed within that amount of time. So again, staying up to date, uh, and, and, and truly getting to know something other than what you read or you saw on WRAL or what you saw on CBS 17. Know that, you know, we do have 100% clearance rate for, uh, homicides in, in 2024. I think those are the things that will win people over and start to have that paradigm shift on how they view crime within our city.
And then on slide 23, that James December traffic stop map, I know it's kind of dot-plotted there. Um, is there a heat map version of this or is that something that the rest of city staff could assist with?
So, yes, there could be, uh, again, that, that's just plotting of those things. Yes, we could have it converted to a, a heat map. But what you'll see is the main thoroughfares will be your, your heat indexes. You're looking at your Merkison roads, your Morgenthau roads, your Skyboat roads, your Rayford roads, and that's where you'll see your heat index pop up the most.
And then on issues of recruitment, I know that's been a hot topic. I think that, um, Major Holloway's done some really great effort with the town hall that she presented where I think, um, the folks in the recruitment office, um, really had a lot to say. And I'm hoping that, you know, when it comes time to, uh, future quarterly reports or future discussion on recruitment, that maybe those folks, um, can come visit with City Hall because they had a, a lot to say about, you know, sort of the interview process and some of the things that they are really hoping that they could advertise, you know, sort of almost from an HR perspective. Um, I certainly want to welcome, you know, more, um, novel ideas on how we can kind of be attractive in that interview process or in that recruitment stage. Um, in particular, because I've heard two issues come up when recruitment issues, childcare, because we're sort of, um, having folks, um, do double time. I think you can correct me about how many officers we have out on the field. It's almost half of what we should have and therefore people having to do sort of double the amount of shifts or they're not getting their preferred.
Well, and, and again, the, the, the reality is, no, they're not doing the double amount of shifts. Do we have certain overtime issues?
Sure.
Yes, okay. Uh, do we, the biggest problem we have with childcare is not the overtime that we have to work, but we are 24 hours a day, seven day a week, 365 day a year operation. So we do have rotating shifts. We do have people that go move from a night shift to a day shift. Those are some of the complications that we see surrounding our, our, our childcare issues. There are no 24-hour daycares within our city. But when that mother of two rotates to a night shift, she relies on, if she has no family, no support systems here within the city, that, that she has to make sometimes a tough choice. Uh, do we, do we offer relief? Yes. We, we have an opportunity where someone can go to their captain and say, hey, I have a temporary issue with childcare. I need temporary relief. But when we talk about, you know, lasting over a career of, of 30 years, I can't give one person a permanent Monday through Friday, nine-to-five job, you know, and, and, and that's what really puts a hindrance on some of the childcare issues, but as it relates to law enforcement.
But that, that's the kind of novel approach. I'm hoping that you can kind of help lean into, because it's not just a law enforcement issue. It's true for a lot of probably different departments, but I think because you guys are of a particular interest to most of city council, um, you know, there's, there's cities that provide childcare for their employees.
Well, you remember, uh, Assistant Chief, uh, Berg, before she left, that was one of the things she really leaned into. She looked at several different options, you know, and, and the thing is, is, is if you don't have, you know, someone's not gonna start a 24-hour daycare business if they're only gonna get five or six actual kids to come in there. So I think there's, there's an opportunity for partnerships for multiple agencies that have those 24 hours a day, seven day a week operations, the county, the sheriff's office, the fire departments.
To make it worthwhile.
To make it worthwhile.
Last question on recruitment, then I'll, uh, give it back to the mayor. Uh, this idea that, and we talked about economic development and growing our professional job offerings here, we've got spouses of law enforcement that are having a hard time finding the kinds of jobs that their education or profession dictate. And so if they're having to go to bigger cities, you can be a cop anywhere. You know, you're sort of in high demand in any given city. Um, so I've just heard a lot about, uh, folks leaving our department, not because of lack of opportunity or, you know, lack of pay, but because their spouse had a hard time finding, you know, relevant work here. Um, is that something that you're seeing enough of to, to sort of register on a radar for you?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, that, that's it, Mr. Mayor. I've got some other questions. I can email them.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Uh, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for a wonderful report. You know, I've been looking at the clock ever since you've been up here. You have been up here for 53 minutes already. And there's really nothing else left to say because, as you said it before, the numbers speak for themselves. So according to the numbers that you have put in your, uh, report, all I think I want to do is to stand on my feet and say thank you for a job well done. Help me, y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. And, uh, Chief, good job. And, and again, I'll recap this. I'll go to, uh, well, I see Councilmember Mahndra's popped up, so I'll let him have his, uh, remarks. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we receive the report.
Your colleague's gonna beat you. They've been waiting. Someone go to Councilmember Banks McLoughlin. She's been waiting for that.
The police report.
All right. This is Council, uh, this is motion by Councilmember Banks McLoughlin. I think Councilmember McNair, you were the second? Yeah, okay. All right. It beats you to it, my friend. All right. Uh, we've had 53 minutes of good discussion. All right. Um, discussion on the motion. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this isn't so much for, um, the chief of police because he provided great data, but it is for my colleagues, um, as we kind of interpret this data and what to do with it. Um, in particular, the juvenile crime issues. Um, you know, I've been practicing law here in the city for about a year now, and I'm on the juvenile court appointed list. So I'm seeing sort of the front end of this on our policymaking and the back end of this once it gets to the courtroom. And our children really do need our help. They need our support. They need our investment. They need our protection. They need more than just policing. So when we think about why are young people grabbing on these door handles? Why are these young people getting into all these, these assault numbers are up? Um, we've got to figure out how we can put these idle hands to better use through the kind of after-school programming that will keep them from doing those kinds of activities. We've got to teach them how to de-escalate situations that are never going to happen between their peers because they don't see that anywhere else around them. And all of those things happen outside of law enforcement. So if we want to affect those numbers, we can't do just policing. We can't do, uh, just this one, one, one-dimensional approach. Um, there are strategies that exist that have proven to have upwards of 70% reductions in juvenile crime when you focus on after-school programming. And then there's other strategies that have virtually no efficacy, such as curfews, that we got to avoid. Um, so I just want to make sure as we're looking at the juvenile crime issue, we're thinking about it very comprehensively, that we're not sort of just relying on, uh, law enforcement to have to deal with it on the back end, but we're making the necessary investments on the front end so they never end up in the hands of law enforcement. Um, so that, that's my request to everyone here is that we look at those numbers and not just think that it's on Chief Braden and his team to do something about it. It's really on us to beak all the alternate investments so that it doesn't end up, uh, with FPD. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. And, uh, perfect segue to it as we close this out because I believe all of what you said, but I believe a basis of all of that is creating economic opportunity for people, their parents, and to improve their situation and opportunities. So, um, with that, I think we've got work to do. But, uh, Chief, good report, good job. And so council, we've had plenty of discussion. Let us, uh, take your votes on this. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chief. Perfect segue into item 10.01, uh, public hearing, uh, approval of economic incentives for Project CrossFit. We'll give a minute for them to dismiss. Thank you all for joining us this evening. All right, Mr. Patton, we just got to talk about economic opportunities. Tell us about one.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm Rob Patton. I'm the executive vice president for the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. We're here tonight to talk about Project CrossFit. I'm joined by Brittany from our team, as well as Matt and Jason from the project. And you don't want to help me now. There we go. I'm gonna have to do this manually, it looks like, but that's okay. But I'm gonna go reverse order. So what we're here tonight is to have a public hearing, of course. And the bottom line upfront is we're asking to, uh, for an approval for $63,948 grant paid over five years. Background about the project, uh, Project CrossFit is an air dome manufacturer, American-based. They are looking at our community to move the headquarters, manufacturing and distribution operations for, uh, their whole operation. In this move, if they choose us, they will create 72 new jobs with an average salary of $47,000. of $47,734, which is higher than the county average. They will provide a capital investment tax base of $4.1 million, and over 10 years of returns on tax revenue will be $229,192. So, what do they make? This is an example of what they make, and I believe this is in Carolina. Is that the Carolina Panthers? So, this is Carolina Panthers practice field. They're one of only three manufacturers in the world that make these domes, and he has domes everywhere from across the NFL, NCAA, to include foreign countries have these so you can do year-round sports, whether it's because of winter, whether it's because of desert, these provide year-round. They also have them over pools as well. Where are they looking to go? Let me orient you to this map. This is Airport Road. This is Aviation Parkway. This is Pine Haven Road, just off here, basically where the star is Fayetteville Regional Airport. This is a, there's two tracks. The first track here is about a three-acre track that is currently zoned in the city. This is an approximately 11-acre track. This is currently in the county. This will be annexed in. They're both zoned industrial right now. What will this look like when he's done? This is conceptually what the project will look like if approved, if they select our community. So, it'll be, again, the entire headquarters, the manufacturing, and distribution will all be located here. And again, this is not just national, this is global for what these folks make. So, in summation, we ask that the ask of $63,948 cash incentive grant be approved, paid over five years, and I'm available for your questions. Thank you for your time.
All right, this is a public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Patton. At this time, we are preparing for a public hearing. The city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We begin with the presentation, which we've heard from Mr. Patton, then we'll move into the formal hearing, which we're approaching that time. 15 minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed to the item of the hearing. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. So, when the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, and then begin to address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and then when your time has expired, the timer will ring. With that, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Council, any questions, comments for Mr. Patton? All right, Ms. Thompson, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Stanton, I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I know it's a collaboration between the city and the county. I see that they're giving up $88,000, too. What else can we do to entice this company to come, and what other states are in competition with us?
Good question. So, we'll start with the last question first. So, currently, we're in competition with Minnesota and Georgia. And so...
Oh, we've got better weather.
So, those are our two main competitors right now. Obviously, approval of this, county approving, the state has approved a one NC grant, a little over $200,000, which is going to help with this as well. And frankly, and I don't want to speak for Matt, but I think expeditious movement. He has got some time considerations when it comes to, because again, he is closing but opening a manufacturing facility. So, speed to market is very critical for this project, so the faster we can move. And when we go into the permitting process and rezoning, really helping with the speed is going to be the number one thing, in my opinion, besides the incentives that we can do to help this out.
Now, I just thought of another question when you was mentioning that because myself and council was talking about extra steps companies have to go through to come to do business here in the city of Fayetteville. And that's why I wanted to see what can we do to streamline that process so they don't have to go through those extra steps to make our location more enticing.
And again, sir, I don't want to speak for the project, but from my experience with the city staff for the planning, zoning, permitting, any of those actions, and for this project specifically, there has been rapid answers, free conversation, really stepping up to the table to say, hey, whatever you need to help out, we're here to help you. As long as we can get this across the finish line, I'll come back to you and let you know. But we have been, am I wrong on that at all? Okay. So, in this case, if we can continue this right, the speed that we're working at, that's key. As you know, it's, time is money.
Yes, sir.
So, that's what's critical for most projects.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and just for the listening audience, this is a statutory requirement. Anytime incentives are given to have a public hearing, which we're doing tonight to give opportunity to discuss this so that it's done in an open, transparent way. So, this is just a statutory requirement.
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilman Mahendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to make a motion if anybody asks their questions.
I think Mayor Protim has her light, and then we'll circle right back to you.
I'll second that.
All right, sounds good. That speedy enough for you? All right, so there's a motion by Councilman Mahendros, seconded by Mayor Protim, to accept and to move forward with the items as presented. Discussion, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, so the county is already on board? Have, or what's the next?
Yes, ma'am. The county hearing is going to occur on the 17th of March, but we have, they have gone through a closed hearing, and so it is now going to the open hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, with that, council, I'll look to you for your action on this. Who are we missing? All right, with that, that's unanimous. We appreciate it. And if we could, welcome to the city. If you all could come and just let us greet you formally. We appreciate you choosing our community. We hope that everything goes well. We're going to beat Minnesota anyway because we don't get that much snow. So, we just got to compete with Georgia a little bit, but we're ready. So, we want to welcome you to the city. We're going to speak that into existence. It's a great community. But what's your name?
My name is Matt.
And where are you guys based out of?
I'd rather not say.
Okay, no problem. But look forward to seeing you around, Matt.
Can I just say how, sorry? We have really enjoyed working with Rob in particular and the city of Fayetteville, and we're pretty excited if this works out. This has been a great welcome so far, irrespective of the grant. It's, we appreciate it, but certainly the welcome here has been outstanding, so thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Rob. Good job, sir.
Sir, thank you.
All right, council, moving next to 11.01, the evidentiary hearing. We're now moving into hearings that require the city council to hear sworn testimony. This is an evidentiary hearing. The city council's decision must be based on competent material and substantial evidence presented during this hearing. All of those wishing to speak must be sworn and provide testimony under oath. Counsel, if there's a need to disclose any ex parte conversations or conversations that you've had separate and apart regarding this matter, please take this opportunity to do so now. I ask that the city clerk would affirm all those who will participate in the hearing. After that, the professional staff will present the case before I open the hearing, and I see Mr. Will is making his way. And so, with that, I'll take time to allow the city clerk to do those things.
Mayor, we have two speakers this evening, and if I could have Mr. Kojak Kowasi and Mr. Daniel Baron come over to the podium.
Gentlemen, if you could come over here. I apologize, I said podium. So, with that, we'll turn it over to you, sir.
I'm trying to find it. I can't see it right now on the screen. This is SGP 2501 for the reduction separation for the automotive wrecker services. If you'll remember, in November late last year, gentleman came in for the annexation on Cumberland Road. The item before you tonight is to have the automotive wrecker service there, reduce the separation requirement needed to locate as the additional standard. Reduce the separation of 250 feet down to approximately 10 or so because of the location next to residentially zoned property. I was there this morning. I wonder if somebody presented it and shut it out. Anyway, 3424 Cumberland Road, 2.47 acres. Again, they're asking for that separation requirement. The previous use of that property was an automotive wrecker service a few years ago. They're just looking to continue that. And they are here to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, are you all still waiting? Is there some presentation you're trying to show us, Will?
You have it in your packet there.
Yeah, and I thought we revisited this already. We had this one time before, but that was for what, annexation?
It was the annexation in the packet.
All right, all right, so with that, we'll open the public hearing.
You might be able to see that now. Thank you so much. Subject property there, Cumberland Road. We'll run through it real quick, but just to give you the nuts and bolts, you have options here and your findings for the case. Let me know what you want to see on the screen, if you need anything.
I think we're good. Did you all have any testimony, any statements you wanted to make?
No, we're really just, we're a small company, and we're just trying to help the community, help the law enforcement with cleaning up the roads with the accidents and stuff, and employ other people. So, if you approve this, it's going to help us employ other people, too. So, that's really basically, you know.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right, so with that, attorney, you had something?
Yes, Mayor Colvin. Just wanted to remind the council that this is a special use permit that requires evidence and testimony on the six factors.
Right. All right, Councilman here, you had a question?
Well, yeah, I think I will, Mayor. I was not going to do. So, could you show, could you show the pictures of...
Excuse me, Mayor Colvin. I'm sorry. So, generally, they, are y'all, they both testify, they give the testimony, and then we take questions.
Yeah, so I need to close it.
Just want to make sure they both get a chance to testify.
Well, I think they kind of designate the spokesperson. He spoke on behalf of you. Is that the way it was, or would you have something that you'd like to say?
Only thing I want to say is when the time we get the place, and normally the places we are bad in half of the city of Fayetteville, because we have a lot of trash over there, homeless, everybody building the small houses, small batch houses, and that is not professional. By the time you get this place, we clean out that place, nobody over there. Now, all the homeless come into downtown. So, we get them out there. And before, that place is for business, like a wrecker business. Then we come and continue the same thing the other person doing. It's what we doing now.
Right, so you made improvements to it, so thank you. Yes, sir. All right.
No question, Mayor.
All right, all right. So, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and I think we'll go to Councilmember Green. You had your light on?
Uh-uh.
You did not? Okay, all right. All right, council, we look to you as we review the six criteria. Any comments or questions, we'll entertain a motion if so inclined to do so. All right, Councilman Mahendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question for staff. Was there a reason this was a special use permit and not a variance?
Sorry, part of that criteria for the reduction is you can, you have to get a special use permit to reduce the distance separation. So, that's what it is right now.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Davis?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. According to the PowerPoint, there's a home right next to a gate. Do you guys own that home as well, or?
We own 3404 Cumberland Road and 3424 Cumberland Road. That house in the middle is actually a gutter. It's a gutter house. It's actually a business, like a gutter business, but he just, he stopped doing business, but it's still there. His business is still there, the establishment.
Okay.
But it was called the gutter man.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, council, I need action on this. I'll have your tablet. All right, this is District 5. You got any comments?
I did have a question for the attorney. Madam Attorney, can we, we don't, we don't have the evidence that, we don't have answers that I, let me ask a question that I don't want to. In their application, did they answer the six things that were qualified, that would qualify that we need as a council to legally move forward?
Councilmember Green, I did not look at the application, but what I would say is it's before the council, for the council's consideration, if there is a motion either way, it's for the body to decide.
Okay, so I can proceed with the motion.
Yes, ma'am, your motion can be however you like it.
Okay.
So, just to make sure I'm clear, the closest property...
Right next to us, the 3420, the 3404, we already operational business as a wrecker service. We own the city.
You're right now operating, right. And the house that they showed us, even though it's in a residential building, it was a gutter shop, is what you're saying? So, it was a commercial space, not a residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can do it from here if I can get Will to do something.
Oh, all right. Let me get the...
The property actually connects.
Got you. All right, I understand.
That's their business.
All right, so Councilman Benevente here, and then I'll go back to Green.
I was just going to help make the motion, but if Lynn's got it, she's got it.
All right, Councilmember here, you had a question, or we're going to...
Yes, sir, Mayor. If we could look at the surrounding properties tab, there's not a number on it, but it has north, west, south, and east on it. Let's see, does it say up here on mine? Okay, and looking at this, which is, and I see the surrounding properties, Wes, that that says Wes, the photo of Wes, is that there? Is that your business?
We're right next to that, literally.
Okay, so you are not in a photograph here?
We are next to Wes.
You see what I'm looking at, too? Okay, there you go.
The business. This is the Wes. We're right next to that, right next to it.
Okay, so the Wes photo is not you?
No. No, we're direct, we're right next to it, like grabbing distance.
And if you are at the Wes property and you are right next to the Wes property, then the properties that I see in north and east and south, approximately in distance, how far are those properties from you and Wes?
Way off. We ain't nowhere near that north. That's like in the neighborhood. We're on Cumberland Road. That's in the back of the neighborhood, middle. And that east, that east, the blue, we see the blue white house right there?
Yes, sir.
That's ours. That's connected. You can go behind that and walk through the gate and go to the next property.
You say that's your property, yeah.
Yes. But any residential, like, there's no residential, like, right up on us. And it's been gated. You know, we constructed the whole inside of that, so it ain't no real residence.
Yeah, and that was what my, that was what my only thought was, concern was, in going from 250 feet down to 10, surrounded within that residential... feet down to 10, surrounded within that residential pocket, that's-
If you take the property and go all the way to the back?
Yes, sir.
That's where you're looking at, that north, that them house, but we don't, we ain't even there.
Okay.
We ain't even, nowhere without that. We just in the front area, pretty much.
Okay. Yeah, I wish I had better visualization, but thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Benavente.
I think he's excited to do it.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I motion that we approve on this behalf. Findings number one, the special use complies with our applicable standards, conditions, and specifications in this ordinance, including Section 30-4C, the use of specific standards. Besides it being 25 feet from the residential area, we follow all the guidelines, even though they want it to be within 10 feet. Finding facts number two, the special use would be in harmony with the area which is located, will fit in the area due to the existing various business that are already in that area, like the garage and the towaway company. You didn't mention the gutter company that was in there.
Because he kind of like-
Okay, I'm just going to findings and facts. And the special, number three, the special use would not materially endanger the public or the safety if its location is proposed and developed according to the plan that's submitted and approved. Say again?
Because it's located in a heavy industrial zoning district.
Right. Because it's heavy industrial district, this special use would not materially endanger the public's health or safety because the area and the vehicles in the area are in a fenced area and not allow the public to be able to enter anywhere to endanger themselves. Finding facts number four, the special use in general conformity with the city adopted land use plans and policies. The land has already been approved for annexation and rezonance in a heavy industrial district to store vehicles. Also, the past used land was in, used to store vehicles as a towing company. And number five, the special use would not substantially injure the value of the abutting land of the special use as a public necessity. It is a public necessity in a way that we would be able to help citizens store vehicles and also help the public when they break down or help need in any type of way. I'll add something, but I'll add it later. And finally, number six, it complies with other city-relevant state and federal laws and regulations. Without staff, any objection, I believe it does.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember Thompson, as stated. Is there a second? Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin? All right. Motion been given and properly seconded. Discussion, I think we've had ample. So counsel, I'll look to you for your votes on that. All right, who are we missing? Ms. Paula? All right. Unanimous. Gentlemen, congratulations. Keep expanding, employing, and improving. Thank you. All right. All right, good job, counsel. Got through that. All right. All right, counsel, the final item is 12 point, well, I don't, yeah, 12.01, additional polling location for the 2025 municipal elections. This is a request. You're making sign languages. Okay. All right, making sure I'm staying with it at law. I'm on the next item now, so. Okay, all right. All right. So additional polling locations, last year during the election time, there was one location at Clifdale in addition to the main location at Board of Elections. This is a similar request so that proper notification can be given to the Board of Elections and whatever associated fees. I think as we look to try to encourage more voter participation, since in West Fayetteville, District Six, Seven, and Eight, really have to traverse a long way across town to participate in the process, so. And Four, yeah. Yeah, you have people over there as well. And Nine, have people in the western part. So counsel, this is up for consideration. I'll look to you for action on this. I don't see any lights on. Is it, oh, I see plenty of lights. Okay. Councilmember, let me, Ms. Paula, is this clear from the last time?
Yes.
All right. So Banks-McLaughlin, is that your light?
Benavente.
See, my stuff is all messed up. Benavente is in the middle. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just move that we approve a Clifdale early voting location.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember Benavente, as they're second. Seconded by Banks-McLaughlin. All right, discussion. All right, counsel, look to you for your votes. All right. Motion carries. All right. So that item carries. And counsel, the final option, item 13.01, would you like to move that to a work session? If so, just need a consensus to do so regarding the wrecker operator's requirement or proposed ordinance to make cleanup a part of that in the city. Okay. All right. Those in favor, I would also like to have us take, either we can move to a work session or take formal action. No is in no formal action or no work session?
Well, we don't have to take formal action because it's just a report, but I think, I don't think it's worth, we have a very busy work session.